Hello, everyone. Welcome to tonight's regular Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. It is the first Monday of July, being July 7, 2025. The time is now 6:30 PM. And as for roll call, we have six Planning and Zoning Commissioners present. The absence is Commissioner Hendricks. Well, it says the next thing we're going to do is have the elections unless we go to staff report first. I don't see staff report on here. Go ahead.
Y'all can carry forward with the elections.
All right. So, once a year, we have the election of officers, and it is scheduled for the first meeting in July. We follow that sometimes, and sometimes we don't. Oh, for the record, Commissioner Hendricks has made it. So, back to item one, but there's a call to order this one. So, we'll call it one B. Back to item one B. Election of Officers. In the past, years and years ago, the chair was a position that stayed the chair for a while until they weren't chair anymore. However, over the last four or five years, we have switched the chair annually and the vice chair. And so, continue with that. Certainly, being chair has been an honor to represent and help you guys out, but I'm done. And so, let's move forward. Any nominations for chair? I do have one, and I'll make it if nobody else does.
I nominate Daryl Eisenberg.
I would second that. It doesn't need a second. Are there any other nominations? Anyone else? Hearing none. I guess there's no need to vote. So then, we'll move to the vice chair position.
I would still encourage you to vote.
Okay. All those in favor of letting Daryl be the chair, Daryl Eisenberg be the chairperson, please signify by raising your right hand. Measure passes six to... Daryl does not wish to vote for himself, but he just did.
That's why I was wishing that y'all would vote. He might not want it.
We failed to ask him that. Elected by default. So, we'll go with a 7-0 vote for the record, and then we will then move to the vice chair. Anyone wishing to make a nomination or nominate themselves? I have two persons in mind, but I'd like to nominate Commissioner Jennifer Ordno. My apologies. I was going to call your previous last name. Jennifer was a council member for Katy Prior, and so I think she'd fit right in with the way things roll in a meeting.
I second that.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? All right. So, if not, we'll go for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Measure passes seven to zero. I will now evacuate this chair gladly. And if we could, as we roll into the consent agenda... No, we're going to go to introduction of agenda and format of hearing, but that's not for me to say. I'm out.
Guess that's what I get for not showing up for dinner. All righty. So, that goes roll call and certification of a quorum. Got the introduction and agenda of format and of hearing.
Thank you, new chair. So, tonight, for each item, we'll have a call to order followed by a staff report. Then there'll be the applicant presentation, and that'll be followed by any public comments in support or opposition. Please state your name and address for the record. Please be brief and to the point within a three-minute timeframe. After that, there'll be a commission and staff discussion. And finally, the commission will vote to recommend approval as presented, approval with conditions, denial of the request, or to table the item. And city councils' consideration of the zone change item for tonight will be on the Monday, July 28, 2025 meeting. So, tonight, on the consent agenda, we have, one, the approval of the minutes from the June 16, 2025 meeting. And then, the second item is a final plat of Lutrac South, Section 1. And then, on new business, we have a zone change from the R1 District to the General Business District along Pearland Parkway. And then, the second item is amendments to the thoroughfare plan. I'll pass it back to you, Chair.
Okay. That brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to... Okay, we have two that have to recuse themselves.
Chairman, I move we move item B for consent agenda.
Okay. Please show that item B is being removed. Seeing that, can we... That brings us to item A on the consent agenda, the approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the...
Commissioner Haskins' motion to approve.
Commissioner McDonald, second.
Okay. No discussion. Can we... Can we... Everybody wishing to vote in the affirmative, sign by raising your right hand? Show that it's 5 to 0. All right. That brings us to items pulled from the consent agenda. Okay. Okay. Do I need to read it again, Lawrence?
We're going to look for somebody to make a motion to approve before we do anything else, sir.
Okay. Can I have a motion for approval?
Commissioner McDonald to approve.
Commissioner Haskins, second.
Okay, thank you. So, that brings us to the staff report on it.
Thank you, Chair. So, the plat before you is, as mentioned, the final plat of Lutrac South, Section 1. And this is to create 73 lots and six reserves in four blocks on approximately 29 acres of land south of Old Massey Ranch Road and east of Harkey Road. So, here we get a look at an aerial of the property. You just kind of place it in the vicinity. So, this whole area is part of the Massey Oaks, but specifically, this area is a part of the Lutrac addendum, which included the red outlined area, as well as this part of south portion of Lutrac. And then, the upper part is the northern portion of the Lutrac. And so, it's part of that larger Massey Oaks PD, but it is an addendum to it specifically for the Lutrac. So, here we get a look at the plat. The left-hand image is the actual plat with subdivided lots with access coming off of Harkey Road. So, based on our analysis, staff actually does not recommend approval of the final plat for the following reasons. And so, reason one, the plat does not conform to the approval criteria of a final plat found in Section 3.1.5.4 of the UDC. And kind of laying out the sub-sections, Section A is, "The adjacent infrastructure to support the proposed final plat has not been provided." And specifically, Lutrac currently is all still one tract as it's part of that original Lutrac, and it has not yet been separated by a final plat. Therefore, it is adjacent to County Road 100. And Section 3.2.1.2 discusses that owner's obligation... It discusses owner's obligations for dedication and certain improvements of public infrastructure. And so, through previously proved facility impact studies, improvements required are in the realms of roadways, water, and wastewater. And then subsection C says, "Section 3.2.2.6 discusses that when a subdivision is proposed adjacent to a substandard perimeter roadway, that the developer shall participate in the improvement of a reasonable share of the road." And then, lastly, Section 3.2.4.2 discusses the extension of water and wastewater lines along the entire frontage of the subdivision when adjacent to a street or thoroughfare. So, in this instance, the subdivision is adjacent to two roadways. It has County Road 100 and then Harkey Road. Harkey Road section has been built and with water sewer and the roadway, but it's adjacent to County Road 100, and water and wastewater lines would also need to be extended to the east boundary of County Road 100. So, you can imagine any part that's in front of the Lutrac, that's County Road 100, is that section that we're talking about. That has not been built to date. And so, additionally, the lift station for Harkey Road is still not complete per the EDCM, Section 4.3.30. And then, secondly, to note, a subdivision improvement agreement or a development agreement for the above public infrastructure has not been approved or executed as well to allow this final plat to be approved without the installation of those improvements. The prior owner of the subject parcel and the city had agreed to not submit or approve a final plat until the water and sewer facilities along the frontage of Old Massey Ranch have been installed. And regardless of what the transaction was between the prior owner and this applicant, that provision still remains applicable. So, that concludes staff's report.
Okay, that brings us to the applicant. Do we have applicant presentation? Seeing no one moving in that direction, that would bring it to... No, that's not it. That would bring it to the public. So, anyone wishing to speak for or against this? Seeing no one moving in that direction, I'm going to ask one more time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the final plat on the Lutrac, Section 1? Seeing no one, then I'm going to move it to the council, I mean, to the commission and open it up for discussion.
Okay, I have a question. So, this doesn't match the red outline, the proposed plat. I'm confused at the location of this.
Yeah. So, and you'll notice it should have a little bit of a... It doesn't include these areas, if that's what you're meaning, these kind of areas I'm trying to run with the cursor. It's just the kind of bolded areas here, up to here, down, and then cuts back kind of. So, notice it. Includes though, here's Section 2. This is Section 2 all through here. And then, this is actually a part of one of the basins. It's actually a separate plat now. So, the plat is only the 73 lots, which kind of run through kind of the lighter dirt area. And then, coming through here is more of a part that is easements for different utilities. Both the plat and the map matchup. It's just, it's hard to tell with it being so zoomed out.
So, at this point, the only reason why you guys are not recommending it is because you're waiting on the utilities that would serve this in the future to be completed and accepted by the city?
Yes. So, regional infrastructure is not in place. It's in place along Harkey Road, but not along, and I'll lay it out here, County Road 100 running from this line to Harkey Road. A section's not been completed.
Okay. No, I just want clarity on that. Thank you.
Oh, I have a question. This is the final plat. I get that. We've got four stipulations as to why not approve it. I guess, is it a procedural thing that final plats are considered consent automatically? Even with staff's dissent?
Correct. So, over the years, previous planning and zoning commissions have requested that both preliminary and final plats be on consent agenda. So, in order to maintain that level, understand this is outside of the normal, but that's why it was on consent.
Okay. And then, backing up one from that, again, I'm just trying to understand the procedural part. If we knew the infrastructure wasn't in place, why'd we put it on? Because it, I mean, there's three infrastructure...
I'm lying just a 30-day timeline.
Yes. So, the applicant can submit their application even though it's not complete or it's not meeting the criteria, and the city has an obligation to move forward and present it. And if city staff thinks that it is not meeting that criteria, their obligation is to identify that for you so that you can deny it in accordance with law.
Well, the only thing I would say, you know, this was all spelled out years ago. And we had certain agreements that the developer that was developing the Massey Oaks properties and stuff then in this area, they would do certain thing for infrastructure. And apparently, even if they're not the ones doing it, and somebody else buys it out, it goes with the same rules that they had. So, you know, unless somebody else, anybody else need to speak on it?
No, I mean, I understand the 30 days and why we have to act on it. But I... Is there something formal we need to do so that future plats that staff has issues with goes up on the regular agenda, not the consent agenda? Because I feel like just the heading under consent, the description of consent, this goes against that, right? Because obviously, you're opposing it. We need to have discussion on it. So, is that a formal action or is this...
I would agree. Consent implies procedural, not, you know... And I know, it's a contract issue, right? And it's not marginal. It's not one that, oh, they're completing it within the next 30 days or they're working on it. And so, we can see the effort, or even council can see the effort. But it's three contractual items that have not been met. I mean, consent, absolutely not on the agenda. Okay, if it's got to meet that statute, then okay.
And always willing to help hone the knife and make work better. But for today, this is how it is.
That's fine. I mean, well, I mean, I don't think anybody here supports it.
I move the question. All right. Those all in favor, sign by raising your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Fails zero to five. Okay, we want to bring the others back in.
I think we actually may have the suggested language for you as you call each item, and we're going to get that for you right now.
Okay. I think I can remember it. So... All right. That brings us to the new business. First order of new business, consideration, possible action, zone change application, public hearing. A request by Nick Motamede, applicant on behalf of 24-acre Pearland Parkway LLC owner for approval of zone change for 3.2816 acres of land from single-family residential R1 to General Business District, east side, location east side of Pearland Parkway, north of John Lizer Road, Pearland, Texas. Going to have a motion for approval.
Commissioner Haskins' motion to approve.
Commissioner Hendricks, second.
Okay, that brings it to staff report.
Thank you. So, the request for you tonight, as mentioned, is rezone from the R1 District to the General Business District. And the applicant's intent is to rezone the 3.2816 acre portion to allow for the 8.84 acre, which I'll show you in the next two slides, tract of land, which is fronting on Pearland Parkway, to be zoned general business. So, they're trying to make, there's a portion that's already general business, and they're trying to make this 3.28, that same general business, to make the entire 8.8 acres general business. And to date, staff had not received any written comments in support or against the request. And so, looking at the subject property, kind of I'll outline at first, kind of the overall property is probably over a 20-acre parcel, and that's outlined in red. But the specific one that we're talking about here today for the zone change is the one outlined in yellow, and that's the 3.2816 acres. And then, when I talk about the 8.84 acres, that includes the yellow portion here, as well as the general business portion that's just to the west of it. So, they have this current general business portion, and they're looking to just rezone this portion to be general business and leaving the rest as R1. And so, looking at the future land use type for the subject property is within the commercial center place type. And the place type kind of cut sheet is provided on the right-hand side with some images and as well as the character and intent and land use considerations for that place type. So, looking a little bit at the history of the property, it was originally annexed into the city in 1960. It was then, or my bad, it wasn't then. It has remained undeveloped and is not platted currently to date. And as you can tell from the aerial imagery, it's largely wooded right now. And kind of surrounding it is a mixture of uses. We have some undeveloped land to the east, west, and south, those other tree-covered areas. Then, kind of where my cursor is, there's a large lot residence to the southeast. Independence Park is across John Lizer Road to the south. There's a single-family subdivision kind of further to the west. And then, on the north side is Mary's Creek to the north. So, looking at some of the review criteria. First off, the proposed GB district is compatible with the commercial center place type in the future land use plan. And in terms of the thoroughfare plan, the subject property has frontage along Pearland Parkway, which is a major thoroughfare with sufficient width. And then, in terms of the UDC, the subject property is currently undeveloped. So, when, if development ever does occur, it would be required to meet the GB district should the proposed zone change be approved. And then, in terms of utilities, the property has access to water and sewer along Pearland Parkway. And so, looking at the approval criteria for a zone change, staff found that the requests met all four of the criteria, specifically, the future land use plan. It's consistent with that commercial center place type. And then, it's also adjacent to general business zone properties to the east, or my bad, not to the east, to the west. Got myself mixed around. And so, therefore, staff recommends approval of the proposed zone change request from the R1 District to the GB District. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Okay. All right. I've got, do we do the applicant before we do the speaker? Okay. Do we have a applicant wish to make a presentation? Okay. Name and address for the record, please.
Slides up by chance? Great, thank you. My name is Nick Motamede. My address is 2323 Clear Lake City Boulevard, Suite 180-190. Great, thank you. My name is Nick Motamedy. My address is twenty-three twenty-three Clear Lake City Boulevard, Suite one eighty dash one nine nine, Houston, Texas, seven seven zero six two. We're here tonight to ask for a rezoning of the three point two acres on Pearland Parkway at John Lizer. And I'm gonna keep my presentation very brief. We largely agree with everything the staff has outlined. I think their points are perfectly correct, but I just wanna quickly show a few slides if I may. If you could go to the next slide here. So, we have a very basic conceptual plan of what this is going to look like. So, we are intending to have multi-tenant retail centers along the frontage on Pearland Parkway with a variety of uses, medical and retail. And so, it's gonna be likely spread across three separate buildings, as you can see outlined here, going along Pearland Parkway, heading towards five eighteen. And we'll have a cut right across Heaton Road as well as a cut further up closer to Mary's Creek. If we could keep on going. So, as staff outlined, we are really in an area that is entirely general business. As you can see, what we're really doing is we're just extending the property a little bit to the backside to add general business zoning, about thirty feet in depth, as well as finishing the curvature. So, from a development standpoint and from a impact on the area, materially, you're not gonna see a major change since we already have general business on the entire frontage. What we're really doing here is we're just enabling us to have a higher quality product. As people who have been in the city for a long time know, the way Pearland Parkway came through led to some of these sites being a little narrow in terms of depth. So, by enabling us to add the thirty feet, we're able to build a higher quality development with parking in the rear like a lot of these newer Class A deals you see across the city. And on to the next slide. As you can see in the future land use map, which the staff has already pointed out, the entire tract that we own, the twenty-four acres, are intended to be a commercial use, but we're here only tonight asking for three acres since I think we recognize that the remainder of the track will remain residential, keeping the impacts on, again, the area to a minimum and really not changing the character of the area. And then at the last slide, I just to kind of summarize my points, we're here to try to get the rezoning done, to get higher quality development. We believe it matches the surroundings. It's consistent with the future land use map. And as Patrick pointed out, there is already strong infrastructure. Pearland Parkway is sufficient width. We are not taking actions from John Lizer all the way from Pearland Parkway. And there's water and sewer at the site as well as storm sewer in the middle of Pearland Parkway. If there's any questions, I'm here to answer them and we appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, that brings us, we have one, one person wishing to speak. Mr. Christman, will you take the podium and please give your name and address for the record?
My name is Bert Christman. And I live right against that land. My house and my property is there. We've been there for thirty years. This land that we're talking about, the last I knew, was single family. And there was a developer that bought it and came over to our house and made an offer to buy our property so they could build all these homes in there. Now, here tonight, I'm hearing that this is general business. And I'm wondering, this three acres, who owns that? And are we selling for profit? Or what are we doing? You know? This property is all in a floodplain. Years ago, we let a housing development for people on the north side of Mary's Creek and they built the bank up. And they put me in a bigger zoning and more money for the floodplain. Now, if we let this development come in and build up their land, more floodplain on me. I don't understand how many times we're gonna redevelop or rezone that property. I got the question answered to what businesses? Do we really have a need for any of that in this neighborhood? We've got medical, we've got gas stations and everything within a half a mile. So, I need to have, what about the development? What kind of planning will be to protect our property? And is there really a need for businesses?
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this item? Seeing no one moving to the podium, I'm gonna ask one more time, anyone wishing to speak for or against the, this item? Seeing none, that opens it up to commission input.
Just, just to clarify, this is undeveloped property, so any new development will be required to meet the city's detention requirements, which whatever water is flowing now, you can't basically go over that, right? So, the flow, flows will stay the same regardless of developed or not.
Yes. Yeah, and they, they would have to outfall, not gonna get into engineering stuff, but may potentially be outfalling to the creek. But they would have to, if they're just keeping the general business portion, they have to contain that on their portion. They, let's say they subdivide it. They can't use any of the R1 portion, like the leftover outside of the yellow and current general business. They can't use any of that for detention if they subdivide. They can only use what's in the general business area to do all of their development and they have to be contained within that.
This is a property, I think, that we've seen, the commission has seen for years for things to happen. I know a lot of additional use permits have come forward on it. There's been a lot of pushback because of the trees. Obviously, it looks nice. But ultimately, somebody owns this and somebody has the right to develop it within the rules that the city sets forth. I think this is a minor modification to the existing zoning that allows for a, a better development and a more useful piece that'll add value to the community while still protecting adjacent properties to the the east. So, I would be in support of the request.
Chair, if I may, I just wanted to make sure we're, we're clear. And also for the resident, the right of that line is approximately fifteen acres that will stay R1. And so, that, that's not being requested to change. And so, there's approximately a fifteen acre buffer between the resident, yourself, that will, that is R1 and will remain R1. Wanted to clarify that for everybody.
Commissioner Henrik's here. I'm, I'm in support of it. I think that's what's needed to be done to have a proper retail center that can have enough room to create proper drainage. And if it's in the flood, flood mitigation as well. So, it doesn't flood out anybody.
And ju- just looking on the surface, this is one of those things that it sounds right, looks right, and it could be right. Only question I have is on your rendition, you showed several buildings there. Are you gonna, if, if we approve this and it goes to councilman and is approved, are, are you gonna plat this as one parcel or are you going to plat it as different parcels?
It's likely to be plotted as different parcels. So, each of those centers will be on its own tract of land.
Okay, thank you.
Martin, we, sorry, Mr. Griggs, recall that when we discussed the tree ordinance and the trees, some of the, the fees structure, et cetera, et cetera. That was across the street. I think the example parcel was across the street. And I'm wondering, do we know what the trees are like on this side and is the applicant aware of that? Has a tree study been performed, I guess?
Yeah, so we have a tree survey that we've done and I would say, we actually used to own the property across the street. So, we did the tree survey there as well. And this has less trees on that side of the road, less protected trees.
Good choice, then. Can I, while you're up there, and I'm sorry, I should have suggested it before you walked away. What I didn't see was the depth. This change is three point two acres, three point two nine, three point two six, whatever it was. What does that make the depth for this tract?
It's about three hundred feet in depth, once we add the additional fifty feet or so of GB on the backside.
Okay. With, is this, does this parcel fall within the corridor overlay district at this point?
Correct.
Okay. You, you may need more depth. Just saying. In my opinion, the, the concept here is exactly what's needed. And I, I wish when we did the future land use plan, we had got, you know, into the weeds more with these type parcels. Because it doesn't make sense to have the current shape that, that the land to the north that's red is useless without the yellow from a, from a GB standpoint. And so, if this parcel was going to be GB or ever was going to be GB, it should have at least lined up X amount of feet from the road. It makes sense with the setbacks we have, that makes sense with the landscape ordinance, you know, that we have, the, the setback with the landscaping. The number of parking spaces, the depth of a building, et cetera, et cetera. That usually gives you about three hundred and forty to, or three hundred and twenty to three hundred and forty feet deep. So, just, just hope you, you laid it out correctly, et cetera. So, that being said, I'm in support. I appreciate you, you listening and answering those questions.
One more. Well, I think, I don't know what Commissioner Eisenberg has. To, to that point, now is the opportunity to get as much as you need to fulfill the requirement to avoid exceptions and variances. Because that's, that's, that would be my only hesitation is that here we've potentially and probably approved a zone change and then you come back at a later date and say, oh, that's great, but I can't do this and this and this because I don't have enough depth or I don't have this. So, I, I hope that you've done the due diligence and it seems you have to where those variances or exceptions are either null or extremely minute.
Yeah, I think we have had a land planner look at the site and laid out the buildings and we're looking about seventy-foot bay depths on our structures and we'll have sufficient width for parking on both sides of the building. And to be exact, I just remembered, it's three hundred and eight feet of depth that we're asking for, not three hundred feet. So, I think we will be sufficient, but I appreciate the thought.
Thank you, and we appreciate that.
I'm not gonna make you run back up there. You know, address the the resident, you know, this is always a problem and stuff, you know, we've, we've gotten spoilt here in Pearland for years and years, especially people that's lived there for the last forty, fifty years and, and, and a more of a farm-type or, or, you know, type sit, sitting. I know that, I think y'all have horses and stuff or used to and, and stuff out there. And I've always been envious of y'all's piece of property there. And, but, but, you know, we're not that, we're not that small place anymore and we've got a lot of people that have bought land. And, and they have a right to, to, to develop that ran, land, but we set out certain criteria and we set out things that should, you know, you know, they, it, it's a guide for us to go by. And, and everybody always tells us that we are, we're here to strictly zone the dirt. I don't always agree with that because I think we need to look at the planning part of it too. But I also like to take the, the, the people that are impacted by it. But to be perfectly honest, I think this is minimal impact to y'all. You know, so, I think it's probably gonna pass and, and so, you know, but, but there are things in, in place for your protection. Like you said, the flooding and such as that, they cannot build something that's gonna off-put water on you. They must maintain that water on site. So, go to, go to the podium, sir.
When the assisted living was built up on the north side of Mary's Creek, they raised the creek bank up there higher than us on the south side. So, that's why zoning or whatever does the floodplain jacked us up and rate was because they said we were more likely to flood now. I felt they should have built the creek up equal on both sides. And that's, you know, I'm here tonight because one time we came here, we found out we couldn't even build a house if ours burnt down because in all the rezonings, we got rezoned. And we had to go through requesting our original zoning back. You know, and, and I just don't understand. This guy buys it, they rezon it. This guy buys it, they rezon it. The last I knew, Mrs. Brown owned all the land, was gonna build a barnumium and have horses. That was the last I knew about that land and now I'm here in general business. And on the corner of John Lizer and the Pearland Parkway, at one time, they were gonna put a gas station. And I can't understand what, why they were gonna do that.
They've had multiple times tried to put a gas station, so. All right, if there's nothing else, call for the, everybody. Call for the vote. All those approvals, sign by raising your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Passes seven to zero. That moves us into consideration, possible action and amendment to the thoroughfare plan public hearing. That's staff. We don't need a motion or anything on this, do we?
You, you will be making a recommendation.
Commissioner Haskins to make motion.
I second the motion.
All right, staff.
I assume that the motion was to approve the amendments to the thoroughfare plan?
I realized that after I said, yes, sir.
Thank you.
So, Chair, just to give a brief intro on this, staff has been working with a variety of consultants to go through some studies on mobility and transportation within the city. With that, they have made some recommendations as far as the thoroughfare plan. We have our engineering staff here tonight with Yulsi Ramira and Raj Sherashna to provide the further details that an actual engineer, not someone who pretends to be an engineer like myself, would provide for y'all. So, with that, Raj, Yulsi, take it away.
Thank you, Martin. Good evening, PNG Chair and Commissioner. Thank you for the time allowing us to present the thoroughfare plan update. The city updates thoroughfare plan on a five-year interval. This thoroughfare plan update is part of mobility plan. And the mobility plan was, we partnered with AGH for mobility plan and we have AGH representative here today too. The mobility plan was presented at a joint workshop on May nineteen, twenty twenty-five and accepted by the city council on June nine, twenty twenty-five. Today, we have Kim Lee-Horn who will be presenting the thoroughfare plan update study recommendation based on the two-year-long study period. The thoroughfare plan update will require recommendation from PNG commissioners before it is presented to the city council for adoption. So, Kim Lee-Horn is going to present to you and get comments and those comments will be addressed. And with your recommendation, it will be presented to the council for that option. So, without further ado, I'll pass it to Mr. Vivek for presentation.
Thank you, Raj. Good evening. My name is Vivek Deshpande. I'm a transportation engineer with Kim Lee-Horn and Associates. And I'll be here presenting the recommendations for the thoroughfare plan for city of Pearland. As Raj mentioned, this was done. As Raj mentioned, this was done as a part of the larger Pearland Mobility Study, uh, which was a joint project between City of Pearland and AGAC. Quick agenda, uh, we wanted to touch upon the project team, uh, touch on the overall project background and then really focus on the proposed updates to the thoroughfare plan. And for, happy to take questions at the end or feel free to stop me at any point if y'all have any questions. So we have our AGAC, uh, staff, uh, Trinza, who's a project manager with AGAC. And you also have Ms. Monique Johnson, who's the sub-regional planning manager. In addition, we also had Ms. Carleen Mullins, who had a lot of, uh, feedback and, and guidance through the entire project. Uh, we have listed some of our teaming, uh, from our members of the team. In addition, we had a lot of discussions and coordination, guidance from city staff, steering committee and our stakeholders as well. This is the overall goals of the larger Pearland Mobility Study. Move people and goods efficiently, improve safety and strengthen regional economic competitiveness. So these are the larger goals and the, the thoroughfare plan update was done as part of the first goal there, which was essentially to help move people and goods efficiently. So that's what I will be presenting today. Uh, just as a reminder, this is as Raj alluded, this is the same information that was shared at the joint, uh, council and PNG workshop in May. But I'll be focusing only on the thoroughfare pieces. So on the thoroughfare plan update, there is three main approaches we took to come up with recommendations. The first was we used the AGAC's regional travel demand model. And we did the analysis on that to come up with projections and we used, um, that to inform our recommendations. The second was we're looking at the background development as it has evolved. And also in talking with staff, what are the upcoming developments? And then thirdly, in discussions with staff and steering committee and stakeholders. So those were the three main tasks we took to come up with the thoroughfare updates. So want to touch base on a high level, what is a thoroughfare plan and what it's not? So it's a long-range planning tool which allows agencies to, uh, plan for future roadway network through the city. It allows the agencies to reserve right-of-way for future transportation infrastructure. The thoroughfare plan also determines approximate alignment and how many lanes may be needed based on future traffic projections. It also gives the agency to coordinate with, uh, adjacent cities, counties, text out if the alignment crosses multiple jurisdictions. And it, it's an opportunity to gather feedback from public and the other stakeholders as well. What the thoroughfare plan is not is it does not change ownership of land. Uh, it does not require the agency to actually build and construct any of the roadway projects. It is, does not prioritize any of the projects that are identified on the thoroughfare plan. And it's a higher-level, long-term planning, so it's not, does not use any surveys or cost estimates or have any detail scheduled for the roadway projects. And lastly, does not have a, a, it identifies maybe some source, potential sources, but there's no confirmed plan for funding for any of these projects. So the next few slides, I'm gonna share some of the results and the findings for the travel demand model, uh, that we use. So the, we use AGAC's, uh, regional travel demand model for the greater Houston area. We focused on the, on the City of Pearland. And we, as the base conditions, we looked at how the network looks under existing conditions. So what you see here, uh, the color coding there is signifies the volume over capacity, how much capacity is still available on the roadways. The color coding is if it's red, it's over capacity, higher developed delays and queuing. And then as it goes from red to, oh, yellow and to green, green is free-flowing conditions, there's no delays. And so this is a snapshot from, uh, the model results under, for existing conditions. Next step we did was look at the twenty forty-five conditions. So there are two windows on the screen, the one to the left shows as, I'm gonna call it the base conditions for twenty forty-five. Uh, the window on the right side, there are two main changes that we did to that. We used, we changed the land use assumptions in that. We use City of Pearland's future land use plan that was adopted in the comp plan. And that, with using that, we changed some of the assumptions and the densities, which resulted in different, uh, traffic projections. And the second change was we updated the roadway network to capture what our, which helped us decide what recommendations to make. So we wanted to do this comparison to see how the network would operate with the future land use plan and then, uh, and the, uh, roadway network. So the map that you're looking at is for twenty forty-five on a daily traffic volumes. The next slide, this is similar, uh, but this looks at the PM peak hour. Uh, so the left side is again base conditions in the twenty forty-five original roadway network and the base land use assumptions. The right side is future land use plan and the modified, the road, updated roadway network. So we use the results to help us inform what recommendations to make for the thoroughfare plan updates. But the recap, this is the existing thoroughfare plan. This is straight from city's website. This is the updated thoroughfare plan recommendation. And what may be a little bit hard to see there, we have identified the locations where we are recommending the changes. And so for the next few slides, I'll be going through one of these, one at a time to show what these changes are. The first one's in the upper, uh, on the lower curvy area, pardon me. Uh, the left side window shows the current thoroughfare. And then the right side window shows what is the suggested, or what is the recommended, uh, change to the thoroughfare. So as you can see there, on the left side, there are two north-south major collectors shown. Based on how the development has happened and there's some of the detention there, uh, we are recommending to keep it to a one north-south major collector, which is shown in the red bubble around on the right side window. Next is the Max Road in the existing thoroughfare. This was shown as a, a minor collector, which was extending past the city limits. And our recommendation is to just clip it at the city limits and essentially no other changes are needed. On that one, it will remain as a, as a local street there. Third one is Reed Boulevard. This is, on the left side, it shows existing. This is just making sure we're capturing the existing roadway, uh, roadway width there. It is a, uh, a major, major thoroughfare there. And so we're just updating the map to capture what that, how that roadway exists today. Next is Hughes Ranch Road. This one, we, in the existing thoroughfare, it shows as a major collector, um, connect between Atfield and Reed Boulevard. Uh, we looked at the model to see what would be the implications on adjacent streets on traffic-wise if that connection was removed, uh, primarily because of all the development and some of the geometric challenges there. Based on the model results, uh, our model showed that there was gonna be no significant increase on, on traffic or on the adjacent streets. So the recommendation is to remove or end that segment at O'Day Road. Now, in, as the bubble shows, that link is missing or, or removed from the proposed thoroughfare. Makawa Road, the next two slides are gonna be on Makawa and Veterans. The existing thoroughfare shows an S curve between Broadway and Walnut Street. Based on the roadway alignment and, um, just how the traffic may come in, our recommendation is to continue straight and tee into Walnut Street to continue straight further south. This would allow to preserve some right-of-way as well along a future, uh, extension to the south of Broadway. Similarly, on Veterans, there's as an S curve which connected to Makawa. Our recommendation is to, uh, tee that road up to Walnut Street. And recognizing that both these improvements may be contingent on some of the findings and recommendations coming out of the FM five eighteen study that is ongoing, depending on the wa- on the one-way couplet concept. So we recognize that, but this is the recommendation to the thoroughfare plan. Next is Galveston Avenue. In the existing thoroughfare, it's shown as a minor collector. Based on the proposed recommendation is to, um, keep that as a local street. And that would, in, in light of the on-street parking, which is the intent there, that is the recommendation. Next is Liberty Drive. I, I think on, the, the recommendation is to make that as a major collector. I'll provide, do some widening between John Lizer and Shady Bend Drive. On the existing conditions, it ends at Shady Bend. And so our recommendation is to have that a continuous road all the way to John Lizer. Industrial Drive South, this is again based on some, how some of the development has, and the plats are maybe proposed on this area. So existing thoroughfare shows a north-south major collector. Uh, the recommendation is based on the development, shifting that further to the west. So it's in line with the, the plats that may be going on in that area. Springfield Avenue, this is just ma- reclassifying the roadway. It's, you make, making sure it provides the, uh, right of, reserving right-of-way all the way between Veterans and Harkey Road. It's sufficient with, under existing conditions, and we just reclassifying the road to show it as a minor collector. Massey Oaks subdivision, I think under existing thoroughfare, this is shown as a, as an east-west major collector, but based on the ongoing development and some of the plats have been received and in discussions with staff, the recommendation is to remove that link on the, in the east-west, east-west direction. The last one on that is also on Ma- Massey Oak. Uh, this is again based on some of the development that has happened. The recommendation is to clip that, uh, on the, on the, on the minor collector. And this will be, this is how, again, in line with how some of the plats are being, um, or some of the plats that have come in. And so this is just getting in line with the proposed development. Those are the twelve main areas or the twelve locations we are recommending changes to the thoroughfare. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Okay, that leaves us, that brings us to the, uh, persons wishing to speak for or against. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this item? Seeing no one moving in that direction, that opens it up to, uh, commission, staffing commission, uh, discussion, anybody?
I'll go first. So are there, I know you showed us a bunch of stuff. Is there any particular area that need to be widened due to increased traffic flow?
We did look at that and I think based on what the existing thoroughfare plans are, are already accounting for, we didn't see any additional widening on top of that.
Okay, so there's already some plans for those locations in the mix.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So Lawrence, what happens to, um, right-of-way that was dedicated to the city or unplanted or things are being removed? Do you want to get that back or does the state just keep it?
If it's abandoned, it's right-of-way, then it goes back to whoever dedicated it or their successor assigns. I don't know if there's anybody who's already dedicated right-of-way for the projects that AGAC is recommending to be removed though. Legal hasn't been involved in that part of the analysis.
So I, I wondered about the Massey Oaks. It seemed like there's gonna be a big development with no, with this internal sprawl is good for that area. I mean, it just seems like you're taking all the connections out across. Are you just gonna have a big, curvilinear cul-de-sac design? Area, we're all good with that.
I think that it was removed from the thoroughfare, but, but it was the understanding that some of the plats are gonna come in and provide some roads and connections, but I'm, I'll defer to.
We're gonna trust the developer to do the right thing.
I think that the issue has been reviewed by staff. When they came in with their proposed developments, with their PD amendments and with their plats that have been already approved, um, a lot of that alignment for that road is actually in detention ponds or what has been approved is detention ponds. But maybe, uh, maybe it's better to let the engineer talk about that section of Massey Oaks than me.
No, that, that's correct. There are two parts. One age is based on development agreement and that development agreement also shows a master plat. So all these things happened and we are just trying to reflect what has been approved by the staff for the Massey Oaks development. So only piece that is missing is the, uh, major collector that goes east-west and that parallels to the existing ditch system and where there's now existing detention ponds. So that prevents us from recommending that major collector going east and west. And also the intent is to, for this story, is to check what happens if we remove that piece of, uh, the connection piece and see what kind of, uh, kind of, uh, it, what kind of impact do we see in the other intersections and other roadways? So we didn't see our modeling, uh, forecasted any issues with removal of those streets. Also, it doesn't mean that there's no street at all, there will be residential streets. Instead of minor collector, there will be residential streets, so.
Well, yeah, there'll be streets. So what, and I understand that, that the thoroughfare plan is aligned on the map, right? And it, and it moves based on the needs of development. The idea is generally we wanna get from point A to point B through whatever's developed here. So how, take us to the process of how a line that was on the map was, was taken into consideration when Massey was being platted and developed. But then, uh, plating developed in such a way that we could no longer build the road. Right? So you have, you have, you have a thoroughfare plan that says you have this line, it's gotta go somewhere in this area, right? And then we reviewed the developments and the, between detention and whatever else, you can't build that line anymore.
That's correct. Again, uh, certain things happened during development, uh, when we developed, developed an agreement and PD. So, uh, probably it was engineering oversight or something. I don't know exactly how that happened and how we missed the east-west connection. I have to agree that like, if I had to decide that today, I would have like, where does, where is this line? I don't think like anybody asked that question when we, uh, prepared that plan at that time.
All right, thank you so much, appreciate it.
I got a couple of questions. Can we show, um, update number one? Or if you don't mind, I'd like to go through. Um, and these are both for Raj and, and for, uh, for you, sir. Is it, is it the intent to connect, um, not talking like a child, but the two green lines, um, uh, the one that's been, uh, slightly updated, uh, to the, to the west? Um, and then the solid one, uh, that intersects with the blue for connectivity? Don't, don't we wanna connect those?
We updated this map based on the current plan. And this is the area where PEDC has been, uh, has a master plan. And the segment that read north-south, uh, roadway major collector that we removed is actually a drain as a ditch, existing drainage ditch. So the ma- based on master- So the, based on master planning effort, we are going to widen that ditch to make original linear detention pond instead of the ditch. So it will serve as a residence and provide detention for the master planned area. So that's why it is going to be hard to put the roadway there. And again, the same concept was used. What if we turn that into, we eliminate that? What kind of impact does it do to the neighboring streets? That's the study that we did. There will be small segment at the top near Beltway that will be cul-de-sac, that will provide access to the property to the east side of that cul-de-sac.
Okay. And Raj, you and I are on the same, same page. The, the segment between the dashed red and the solid, solid blue or a green line? Does that make sense?
Oh, okay. That, that is again, that is also a study area by PDC. And that is actually now we're going to design from a north spectrum. I think that's Kirby to Hooper Road. It is going to be designed right now. It is going by PDC.
Okay. But you don't want to remove the line on the thoroughfare plan because it, it removes the requirement to build the thoroughfare by the developer?
Which, which, I'm sorry, probably I missed which line you're. Okay.
I think it's still there, it's just covered up by the black.
I think it's still, yeah. It's there, but it's just covered up by the black, the call-out bubble.
Do you see that? It, it's not on the existing. I'm saying for connectivity reasons.
So I hope this, I, I can zoom in a little bit.
North a little bit more. You're in Shadow Creek at the top corner. There we go.
This, is this the red connection you were?
No, green to green.
Oh, you're, this connection?
Right. Yeah. I mean, these are the kind of updates that we would do at the county when, when we, when we were updating the thoroughfare plan. If we were maintaining connection to one street, but then there was a gap, we'd fill it in. Right? And that, and that way, when development comes along and we realize that that's another east, east-west corridor, it completes the corridor. It's a, it's a gap fill, it's a gap fill project. Either via the developer or not. So it would be my recommendation to include that. If we're, if we're updating that segment to the west of, I don't know that red, red line going north and south, but yes, that gap right there, it would be my recommendation to include that.
I think you've already got businesses established there though.
I think that's the existing Mitsubishi. Their plan is right in between those. So you, you have to cut through their plant to get that to work.
That answers that. Uh, slide two or update two for Max Road? So you left a little bit of it. Is, is it, I guess, would it be the city's intent as development happens on the corners to provide adequate right-of-way?
That is within the city of Pearland area because we don't go outside of city of Pearland and that area is in the city of Brookside, so.
Okay. Makes sense. Red road is good. Um, okay. Hughes Ranch Road, update four? You said it, I didn't catch it. What was the reasoning for removing this? Because your, your spacing between your, your two east-west, McCard and Broadway, your spacing from your previous lens to it remain. Right? It's like every 3,000 feet, you want a minor collector or another road between your two majors, 3,000? I forget what it is. So I couldn't, I didn't catch why it was being removed.
There is, okay, there are a couple of things that I have to explain. Number one is just west of, I believe it is, no, east, west of Royal Road. There was a resident who wanted to build a home. And that, when we asked for the right-of-way, that they came to the city and city council and then the city council okayed at the development of that property without the right-of-way with the assumption that we would be able to fit the roadway in future. So that eliminated that right-of-way right there. And when, and the east side of Royal Road, Brazoria County, BDD for already has planned to put a book detention pond on the east side of the roadway. So that also, if we go on the east side, it runs through existing neighborhood which has homes built along the, that roadway. The existing residential roadway has to convert into major collector street. So there are several challenges to do that project. And again, the issue is the same. It's hard, it's economically probably challenging. And we just wanted to check if, what happens if we remove that? That, that's why it was removed and it was looked at through the modeling process to see if any significant impact.
Okay. If I could comment while you're going to the next one? I do remember us looking at that road in a prior year or two years ago. And that neighborhood to the west of O'Day was also going to, it was the big, for us, I didn't know about the other items you mentioned, but I remember trying to go through and cut through a neighborhood was, was not going to work out. And then you all, McCard was about to come online and you all were, were stating, or we all agreed that we should wait until McCard was completed and then see if this road was even necessary and would be necessary in the next multiple years. So I do recall that.
Update seven, Galveston Avenue? Again, I, I can't write as fast as you can talk, sorry. The reason, it, it says because there's plan for on-street parking. Is that? Go ahead.
That is for the south side of FM 518 Sullivan Brothers project that are residential townhomes. When, again, that came to the PNG and came to the city council and everybody's on board with that to change the roadway width from 60 foot to 50 foot. So what was approved for Sullivan Brothers is we allowed existing roadway to turn into parallel parking. So if you go there, you will see that there's a parallel parking is allowed to boost the infrastructure development in that area and housing development in that area. So that reduced the kind of, the right-of-way width from 60 foot to 50 foot already. So that is kind of changed to residential street. And north side, I think like that, that's the, I would think that we should keep that north side, north of 518 as minor collector. I think I still believe that we should keep it because there are schools and churches and all those things that will probably require wider right-of-way instead of turning it into residential. That could, if you all agree, my recommendation is to keep north side of 518 as minor collector so that we have more room in future.
Okay. And then on eight, I didn't see that you're, you're changing per, per the, I guess the legend on the, on the thoroughfare plan, you're not really changing anything other than you're just updating it to width-sufficient width versus without, right?
So I think in the existing thoroughfare, it's not shown to continue south of Shady Bend Drive. It's shown to end there. So all we're doing is making sure it's continuous all the way to John Lizer.
Right, right, right. Yeah, but then they just change the ones with sufficient width and ones without. Yeah, if you're keeping the same, the same classification?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect. On nine, we, we're good on the spacing of the purple road to Dixie Farm, right? As the purple angles in and comes into Dixie Farm Road, we're good on that spacing between the two? Between Dixie Farm and, I guess, is that 35? Is that Maine?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
So here, one thing that we did is move that north-south, little east because the new plat shows towards the east and it just, if you go to B-Car, you will see that this right-of-way did already, right-of-way shown on that. We just aligned this new line with the existing alignment.
Okay. I'm going to come back to 10. Can we skip to 11 and Massey Oaks? So from what I gathered, this is, this is kind of in conjunction and, and to the commissioner's point, there's been plats for Massey Oaks that have established roads and connectors and this and that? And so therefore we're removing this?
Yes, that's one of the reason that the, the Massey Oaks has been platted and not only platted, detention pond has been built on Massey Oaks area along the corridor of this alignment. And that alignment parallels to the existing ditch.
Okay. And then same for 12. Okay, number 10. So, um, thank you, because I live in Springfield at the, at the only entrance. But this is a, this is a request to the city. I don't have a problem approving this. However, we already have speed issues in one of the oldest major neighborhoods and I live at the front of it, the front. This is only going to increase. The width there of the road is something like close to 45 feet wide, curb and gutter. It, it, yes, it's, it's not meant for two-lane traffic, but you've got residential throughout the entire first, the entire existing roadway. So I don't have a problem with the connection because I want the people at the back to feel my pain. No, just joking. They don't understand what it means to be on a, on a through road. it, it has to be done and, and when that goes through and actually connects, I would strongly recommend that traffic calming is implemented. Bump outs with gardens, something to that effect because it's one way in, one way out and we absolutely have speeders. When they figure out that there's not going to be but one or two stop signs between those, between McLean and Harkey, oh, get ready. And so if y'all can make me that promise, air quotes, then I'll approve that.
That, yeah, if we convert this into minor collector, then it will be challenging to put as speed bumps because our ordinance don't allow speed bumps in the minor collector.
Oh, absolutely not. Please do not. What I'm talking, talking about is, is bump outs to narrow traffic. Absolutely not. I hate, as an engineer, I, I hate speed bumps because they don't cause traffic, they don't calm traffic. What I'm talking about is like the flower beds bumping out. There's one just off 35 that did it just recently on the, on the east side of 35 in a fairly new subdivision.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I understand that. Okay, I got it, got it.
But I applaud this because again, there, there is no throughput. I think it needs to be collected, connected. But in doing so, I, I, I think we have an opportunity to, to significantly reduce and show ways that you can reduce speed and still make it a viable connecting road. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Sure. That's all I got.
I want to thank you for your good work. I'm, all, all these 12 updates, I, I can appreciate and, and really appreciate you bringing that to the table. On another note, looking through the materials that we received on Thursday or Friday last week, what, what I'm really intrigued more than anything is, is precluding these updates is the traffic lights that it looks like are going to be changed at, at different parameters of the city. And Raj, thank you and getting with the, the people with Houston Galveston Area Council as well as this engineering firm. Thank you. Because a lot, a lot of our traffic problem is due to traffic signals. And our city is getting a good handle on traffic signals, making changes when they need to. And so I just wanted to bring that part up that I didn't notice that that was pretty well phase one. My question is, is on these 12 updates, what, what is the timeline that we're looking at from start to completion?
This is, as Vivek mentioned, is the 50-year planning horizon plan. So it just shows that where we need the roadway and what kind of roadway we need. Then it is up to the staff to prepare for the roadway improvement and present it to the, to you and city council as a part of capital improvement projects. So based on these kind of studies and recommendation, we also go to find funding from AGAC and we put those AGAC funding application almost every year. And they have certain criteria to award the funding and sometimes we get it, sometimes we don't. But we continuously put those effort and put those application on annual basis to get those funding apart from our general funding to do road improvement.
First off, to Yulsi and Raj both, and I apologize I didn't use your last names. My hat's off to you both. I think the, the city has always had challenges. And I just see traffic, the, the signals, the yellow blinking, left turns. Just traffic seems to be moving better for me in the paths that I take at the times that I take. Some of you may disagree, but I, I see McCard Road, you know, coming through, that has come through. It's alleviated some, some traffic off Broadway. I just appreciate all the things you've done in this, this study here with, with 12 updates, you know, some, some of which is removing roadways or rethinking. I applaud, I applaud that because that, you know, sometimes that doesn't happen and we, we hear about it all the time in government. Speaking of which, our screens have gone dark. All those millions of people at home watching, you know, I hope it's not going dark for them. But I had a question on number five, Makawa Road? And then also number six, the Veterans Drive? What I, what I'm seeing here is we've taken the kind of rounded curves into more Ts. Is that, is that what I should gather from that?
Yes, sir. That's, the geometry that we had in the past, it's hard to make that work because the S curve and from the S curve, there are like leaf coming out. It's going to be very difficult to construct that roadway the way it is right now. And again, that, this is just a thoroughfare plan update and we have presented different options and alternatives as a part of FM 518 code study. And probably that will dictate what we need to do here rather than just this study.
I was going to say the same thing, that, that what we talk about here today may not come to fruition because of the, the, the way that whichever plan we go to, which was another great study. The other one is update number nine. And I know this isn't the intent of update number nine. I get that you all moved the, the orange road that goes north and south. You moved it westerly. Agreed wholeheartedly there. I just see, I noticed the Dixie Farm connection from Maine, you know, crossing over the railroad track and then hopefully connecting with, what is that road? McKeever? hopefully connecting with, what is that road? McKeever? I look forward to the day that happens. You know, I think that's the next big step for mobility for, for Pearland on the south side.
From, so I have a 35 to, I think, Harkey Road, I think Brazoria County put the application for that. I think they got awarded for that, but it's for 2030 or it's 10 years down the road. So it is there.
And hopefully I'm still alive at that point, and I get to enjoy that road. But thank you. I, I, I've, I've always had that one in my mind. I meant to say something during the C I P, you know, that, that I'd hoped that we, we looked at that, that crossing over the road tracks. It could be, it could be at grade. I'm not suggesting a bridge, another bridge. But sure would like to see Dixie Farm connected at some point. I think that'll help persons wishing to travel from mid Pearland, you know, all the way to I-45. I think that just makes a lot of sense for us. So applaud you guys. Thank you. The only thing I would, would have asked.
We even did P R in 2018 and submitted the application to get the grant to A G A C. At that time, we didn't get that. But fortunately, we, county got it at least for a portion of it.
That's fantastic. Thank you again. And my only request would be to get this information next time, you know, maybe a week ahead of time to give us some time. And maybe Mr. Griggs or somebody in the planning could tell us we have homework again, and we could study a little bit more. And this presentation admittedly was not in our, in our packet, correct?
Correct. Y'all had the true mobility study instead of the Cliff Notes version here.
Right. So I was overwhelmed by that one and then didn't see this one. And yeah. So anyways, wonderful presentation. Thank you again.
Okay, everybody, I'm not going to, everybody's asked all the questions. I'm going to call for the votes. All those in favor, say, sign by raising your right hand.
I want to say, on amendment seven, on update seven, I thought Raj had mentioned that he, he would be okay if the north side stayed the same?
Yes, sir. That, that is a kind of recommendation. So we get enough right-of-way on the north side.
So would, would, right now it's showing the whole road would be changed. So do we need to make an amendment based on Raj's recommendation? I want to make sure that, that we're, would that be correct?
Yes, sir. I'm not entirely sure how to phrase that. So Raj, with the recommendation, may be able to give you the geographic limits, and somebody might be able to recommend so moved.
So Raj, would that be, or, let's see, we're, that section of Galveston, north of 518, south of Orange can remain the same?
That is correct.
I would move that we amend the recommendation for Galveston to remove any change between Orange and 518, based on Raj's recommendation.
Who made the motion originally? Commissioner Haskins, seconded by Commissioner Ordno.
Okay. So I'll go ahead and second that motion. We can vote on the motion, and then we can vote on the, okay.
All right. We have an amendment to the motion. So we're going to vote on it first. All those in favor, sign by raising your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Passes seven to zero. All right. Now we're voting on the amended motion. All those in favor, sign by raising your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Passes seven to zero. All righty. That takes us down to discussion items. City council update.
Thank you, Chair. So at the June 23rd, which was the last city council meeting, there were a couple of items on the agenda. They, council discussed the second reading for the Setta Gas property. That's the center at Pearland Parkway. It was on consent agenda with, with the request from R2 to G B that passed with consent. Then they had the conditional use permit for 2225 North Houston Avenue. If you recall, that was that single-family residential rebuild after the tree fell and it removed the house and then had to build a new house in its, in its original place. That was approved with a seven to zero vote by council. And then there was another conditional use permit. This was for the conversion of the accessory structure into the accessory residence there at 2644 Miller Ranch Road. That surprisingly failed to get approval. And it did, didn't have the applicant show to that one. And I don't know off the top of my head the reason for them being absent that day. I do know that staff has reached out to them just to let them know about the outcome. But conversation was really related to the kitchen and the ability for the city to verify family members for the proposed A D U. With that, it failed at a two to five vote. So all that said, that is y'all's wrap-up on council's actions.
And Commissioner, if I could real quick, so thank you all for coming out for the, the June 30th joint workshop for the Old Town. Do want to remind everyone, if you have comments, please send those to me. It would be great just to get anything you have to Olson by, you know, as early in August as we could, just to give them time to have it polished for hopefully adoption August 25th. But again, thanks for coming out, and hopefully that's, that plan's shaping up.
Okay. That takes us to, we, our next regular meeting is July the 21st. Does anyone know that they're not going to be here? Okay. Commissioner Haskins and Chair Eisenberg are not going to be here. All right. That calls for adjournment at 8:01.
Chief Taylor, weigh in on that.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Hepperson. Member Coza, as far as the cooperatives are, so there's different ways for us to look at these when we're going through a cooperative. If we have several vendors, a lot of vendors that sell a certain widget, so to speak, we can go inside the cooperatives and ask for bids within those cooperatives.